Fifteen seconds.
Okay, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, you want to take the roll call?
Hi, Copson.
Here.
Marilyn Early.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
Dawn Banny.
Here.
Jan Schweddy.
Here.
Jessica Stickles.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
Question?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move on to our special guest this evening. We have two special guests. We have Fran Gattica, if I pronounced that right, Fran, and Nicole Wilson, their community engagement specialist with Dawson Place.
Hi, my name is Nicole Wilson. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for Dawson Place. I've been with Dawson Place for about 11 years now and have been able to work within the Child Advocacy Program as a forensic interviewer. And now I'm very excited to be a community engagement coordinator and be able to now be on the other side of it and teach prevention throughout our community. Thank you for having us. So would you like me to read the proclamation now?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. So, Stephen Arlington, Washington, this is the Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2021 proclamation. Whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to ensure they reach their full potential. And whereas our children are most valuable resources and will shape the future of Arlington. And whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community. And finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Now, therefore, I, Bart Tolbert, Mayor of the City of Arlington, do hereby proclaim that the City of Arlington proclaims April 2021 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we urge all residents to recognize this month dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Fran, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, so Nicole, if you wanted to give a little bit on Dawson Place, and then we'll talk a little bit about what we have plans for April.
Okay, great. So Dawson Place is very unique in the fact that it's a child advocacy center. We house five different agencies under one roof to help promote safety, healing, and justice for children and help the parents and families, caregivers, get the services that they need without driving, you know, all over town or using resources that they may not have to get to these different appointments and such. Um, we, one of the, one of the five are Compass Health Child Advocacy Program. This is the program through Compass Health, which provides individual therapy, group therapy, secondary victim therapy, and parenting support. We also have Providence Intervention Center for Assault and Abuse. They provide forensic medical exams along with victim advocacy. They have ER response, where advocates and state nurses will go to the ER and meet with the families and victims. And we have Snohomish County Sheriff's Department Special Investigations Unit, who detectives are onsite at Dawson Place to investigate assault and abuse. We also have Snohomish County Prosecutor Special Assault Unit. They investigate cases of sexual assault, abuse, as well as serious physical abuse or neglect of children. They're generally referred by law enforcement to the Snohomish County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. We also have a child protective services in our building. And under Dawson Place, we house forensic interviewers, child forensic interviewer, interviewers, who are used to gather reliable information and evidence for investigative purposes. They are trained child forensic interviewers, and they do these for investigative purposes that will then be referred to the prosecutor's office and then to our court system. So we have, with them, we have two facility dogs. They are very popular within Dawson Place. We have a Sabella and Razzle, and these facility dogs are trained to sit with children during their interviews and comfort them. And also, they sometimes are able to go to the courts and sit with them on the stand and support them there as well. So they are a very important part of Dawson Place for us. Another great thing that we have is we have a multidisciplinary team, MDT. These meetings are held at Dawson Place or through Dawson Place. And they have a member of each discipline that we all work together for the best interest of the child and the victim and the parents and kind of give each other's opinion and really make sure that these children and families are getting the best services that they possibly can through the agencies there at Dawson Place. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the times during COVID-19 pandemic. In March of 2020, COVID-19 lockdown was issued by the Washington State Governor. In May, during the lockdown, a social turmoil affected the number of children and families served at our center. So in April, we served 115 clients, and we're on pace to serve 1,129 clients by June 30th, 2020. Then in May, we experienced a 54% drop in clients served. Dawson Place was open throughout the pandemic and adapted to new COVID protocols. However, schools were closed and kids and teens started learning remotely. Our network of professionals to refer families to our center was severely disrupted, and the number of clients served in May and June reflect that fact. Disappointing numbers were, child abuse was still happening, but because kids and teens were home and learning remotely and not surrounded by mandated reporters or people they can talk to or, you know, go to for help, like people at school, maybe coaches with sports not going on, there was a 50% decrease in CPS reports. And so that was very alarming to us. And, and so they, they're, actually, the school districts started teaching teachers how to recognize abuse, maybe through Zoom, or how to talk to kids. So that part was good. But now that the kids and teens are gradually going back to school and back into sports, there's definitely, now that everything's opening back up, an uptick in services. And we're, we are very busy, but relieved to see these kids coming in and getting the help that they, they need and that we're able to provide for them. And I would like now to invite Fran to talk about, April is Child Prevention Awareness Month. And it's a very, very important month for us at Dawson Place. And Fran has planned some great activities and, and things that go on throughout our community to raise awareness. So Fran, go ahead.
Thank you. As the saying goes, it takes a village. And this April, we are really trying to get the community on board to spread awareness about child abuse prevention. This month, more than any other year, it's important for our community, our children and youth, to come together and learn the signs of abuse. Anything from a yard sign on the side of the road, to a social media post, to attending a sugar and spoon food truck with resource pamphlets, to seeing us at a resource fair. Every pamphlet, every pin, every single conversation that involves child abuse awareness is increasing the chance of a victim to get the help they need and to get them through our doors. That is why we are here today, and we're very grateful that you guys gave us the time to be here and inform you all about Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's in April. We want to have the community involved. We have all sorts of things planned, from coffee sleeves scattered throughout Everett, Stanwood. We have, like I mentioned, Sugar and Spoon Cookie Dough coming on Wednesday. From 12 to 4, we'll have a resource table out there for kids and families to just mingle a little bit, obviously maintaining their social distancing, and hopefully they keep their masks on the whole time they're there and enjoy their sugar and spoon at home. But we are just really lucky to be able to be here today and encourage the community to have a conversation and learn the signs of abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Thank you, Nicole. We're very fortunate in Snohomish County to have a place like Dawson Place. So bless you for the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, have any questions for them? Dawn, and then Jessica?
Yes, I would just like to thank you for the services that you do. I, I have an older or younger brother that we adopted him when he was very young and went through very severe child abuse, to the point of almost him passing away from it. And I really appreciate these types of services. And feel free to contact me anytime with any help that you need with any of your programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dawn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you guys are rock stars. I appreciate what you guys do a lot. I know a little bit after the pandemic went, broke out, and I remember the police chief telling us that he was worried about that because the case calls had gone down. And he knows that the, the abuse is still happening. So super appreciate what you guys are doing and, and definitely willing to help any way I can.
After the pandemic, and we're allowed again, I would encourage anybody in the council to contact Dawson's Place. They're happy to give you a tour and show you the wonderful services they provide. It's pretty amazing.
That's correct. We love giving tours. Before COVID, it was our favorite thing to do. And it really, it feels different when you're in the building. You get to hear our sticky hand story that's up on the roof in the nurse, forensic nurse offices. I mean, it's a whole other ballpark, so thank you for bringing that up. And I encourage you all to visit our website. We have a tour video, and it's not the exact same feeling as getting the tour in person, but you get a little bit of the taste of what, what it's like inside of our building.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for being here tonight, spreading the word.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. So we'll move into our workshop items then. First up is the ordinance amending Chapter 9.40 of the Arlington Municipal Code and criminalizing the possession of controlled substances.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, as you might recall, the Supreme Court, State Supreme Court just recently ruled on the RCW that governs possession of a controlled substance without a prescription, taking it out of law. This is a city ordinance that puts it back in for us so that we can use it for enforcement actions. And it is a, really an important piece of what we need from the Police Department, Public Safety side to, to operate. So we're happy to answer any questions, and Steve's online to also answer questions.
Dan?
Yeah, I have a question. So since the state has, quote, eliminated that law, and I know that there are cities that are putting it back in, but what happens when they get to court? If the state isn't going to be doing anything, and we arrest someone for the drugs, what happens then?
They're prosecuted under the municipal code, because that's what you're doing, is you're putting in municipal code. So it's prosecuted with our local prosecutor's office, not the state's prosecutor's office or county. We do it as a misdemeanor.
Okay, I did see that. I was just not sure how legally that was going to happen with, you know, judges and whatever, if it wasn't, you know, if the state was against it.
And if the state, when they, if they put this back into law, then we would just repeal this ordinance and then go back to using the state ordinance, or state law, excuse me.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had several things about this. I haven't decided which way I'm going to vote on this, so I'm really open on this. For one thing, the way I look at, at drugs, this is just my opinion all the way here, it's more of a medical problem than a legal problem. And I'm not so sure what amount of good it does to make with small amounts of illegal drugs, or small amounts of, of non-prescription drugs illegal. I'm not really clear on what the value is. Paul talked a little bit about, about how the police would dovetail into this, but I'm just not, you know, it's a medical problem, and to throw the legal people into this, it's like the police have enough to do as it is, and they're struggling as, as we speak with all the things they have to do and the problems they have to deal with. And to me, this kind of just throws another thing at them that just makes their life much more difficult. So I just wonder, I'm wondering about the value of it and whether it does any good, to sum it up. And again, going back to Jan's question, when the State Supreme Court says that it exceeds the state's police power and violates due process clauses of the state and federal constitutions, that doesn't sound good to me. Yeah, I guess if it's a misdemeanor, it's a misdemeanor. But I just have questions about the, just have questions about it, whether it's a wise thing to do. So that's where I'm at. I guess I need help from the chief, perhaps. I'd like to hear from him. I'd like to hear maybe from another professional as to whether this is, whether this works or not. So that's kind of where I'm at on this topic.
Thanks, Mike. Steve?
Yeah, Mike, I, I obviously would defer to Chief Entura, but I, but I will say to you that in response to your comment about this being something that's sort of piled onto the Police Department, the Police Department has requested this. And it's, it's for the reason that it's a policing tool. They don't generally prosecute possession crimes in and of themselves. And my understanding is the Snohomish County Prosecuting Attorney's Office has not prosecuted possession crimes in and of themselves for some time. Rather, what happens is in possession cases, if you have probable cause to believe that someone is in possession of narcotics, it may open the door for you to be able to gather additional evidence about other crimes. Because typically, that's the situation where the, the police are interested in prosecuting this type of situation. I, I also wanted the council to be aware that I did draft this, sent it down to the city's prosecuting attorney for review. And he had some comments about that, has indicated a willingness to come and answer questions from the council if you are so inclined. We view this, I think, as a potential stopgap measure until the legislature acts. But the legislature may not act immediately. And so that's the reason for the desire to have the law on the books, to be, to be used until the, the state legislature addresses it. The, the comment that you made, Mike, about the State Supreme Court decision, what they were saying was unconstitutional and improper was not the concept of a possession ordinance itself. It was the concept that a person could be prosecuted without a requirement of knowledge, without requiring that they knew that they possessed the drugs. And that's why the, that's why the statute was deemed unconstitutional, because it didn't expressly state that someone possessed controlled substances without knowing it. And I'll, I'll stop there, and Chief Entura can add if there's anything I've said that's incorrect or if there's something I've missed, by all means, he can, he can explain a little further.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to jump in and just give it my two cents. The case that came before the Supreme Court was a case of, these aren't my pants. So knowingly was the, the issue of that the court was looking at. This person was arrested, they had drugs in their pants, and then they claimed that, oh, these aren't my pants. I didn't know there was drugs in there. I'm sure that happens to the council all the time, so you probably can relate to that. So that is a challenge for a lot of people in that case. But when you're talking to the fact of how this actually works with the Police Department, Steve is absolutely correct, that we haven't prosecuted, or the county hasn't prosecuted these cases since 2017 or thereabouts for the felony possession. But we do look at it on the lower level for, you have to realize that the majority of our crimes that happen in the city, the quality of life crimes, the majority of what we deal with is theft and shoplifting, things of that nature. You have to realize that the onus behind those crimes, the push for committing those crimes is very large percentage is drug-related. So when you remove the tools to, to look at the, the drug crime, then you're really opening the door for those other crimes. It's, the legislature put us in a pickle. You had one part of the legislature pushing to legalize drugs and the other part to fighting against that. But it puts us in a, in a, in a problem, whereas, at least when the legislature originally was pushing to legalize some crimes, they were going to put a lot of money dedicated to treatment and other options. But when the State Supreme Court intervened prior to that legislation, even having a chance, those who supported it probably threw their hands up and cheered yay, because now they, they got what they wanted, but they don't have to put any money towards the treatment aspect of it. So it's kind of a double bad for us. I'm willing to have the conversation about legalizing drugs going forward in a responsible way. But in the short term, it's, it's going to cause a significant increase in our crime rates because there is no systems in place to catch the bigger effects that it has on society. And that's what we're talking about. As a society, the, the current use of drugs does harm us as a society. It is a medical problem, and I fully agree to that. But some, it's the only tool that we have to push people towards the treatment they need and the services that they need. And that's why we're asking for the stopgap until we can get a more long-term solution in place.
I also heard that from Officer Thomas on our outreach team, that sometimes this is the tool they need. It's the convincing factor, if somebody would rather go into treatment now than go to jail. So we have put those services out there with our Police Department to try to treat it as a medical issue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Paul or the chief? Deborah?
Well, I kind of have the same questions as Michael, so I was glad he verbalized them. But I hear what the chief is saying, and I hear what Steve is saying. So I appreciate that it's giving support to our police force and, and the tools and knowing that they'll be used correctly. So, you know, still listening and thinking it through, but I appreciate the information.
Is that it? So we'll move on to the next item, which is the resolution approving the change of indirect control of a franchise. Steve Pyfel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is, I think, a relatively, relatively speaking, it's a housekeeping item. Our franchise with Astound Broadband is a franchise that allows them to provide services within the city limits. The franchise agreement requires that if there's a change in control, that they notify us and provide us with information so we can confirm that the new owners are just as capable of performing as the old owners. To illustrate, it's, it's as though you have an agreement with the law firm of Bailey, Duskin, and Pyfel for legal services. If Pyfel went away and, and other person bought the company, you'd want to make sure that the, the new owner was capable of providing services to your satisfaction. That's similar to what's happening here. The corporation stays the same, the owners of the corporation have changed. They provided us with extraordinarily detailed financial information, and Brian and I have reviewed that. We have no concerns that the, the new owners are going to be able to provide services just as capably as the existing owners. And so Brian and I had no difficulty in recommending this to the council. The resolution is, is a formality in a way, but it's required by the rules of the Federal Communications Commission as well. So that's the reason why we're doing this via a resolution. Happy to answer any questions if I can. Jan?
Um, I'm familiar with, you know, we did the policy on Comcast, and I'm familiar with a lot of the broadband, but not with this one. So where, how, where did they go and what did they hook into? Are they Verizon? I don't think they're Verizon, I just.
I, I wish Brian was here because he'd be better able to answer that question. My understanding is they provide limited telecommunications services within the city limits. But that's all I can tell you. I can certainly try to gather more information about that for you, council member.
Well, yeah, because I kind of like, I mean, just because it's up, and, and I'm, I'm not against, you know, us passing this or anything. It's just that I've never heard of it. And if we've got another, I mean, broadband is a focus now. Nate Nearing is in charge of Snohomish County in making sure we get broadband out into the rural areas. So it is upfront. So that's why I'd kind of like to know where and how much and that kind of stuff.
Keep in mind that even though their name is Astound Broadband, they don't provide broadband services. They don't provide cable services within the city limits. They just are telecommunications.
Oh. Oh, okay. That explains it. Thank you.
Other questions for Steve?
And, you know, the, the representatives of Astound Broadband have offered to come and speak to the council and provide further explanation. So if you would like them to be present at the next meeting, I'm sure they would be more than happy to attend.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but we've got so much growth going on. And I'd kind of like to know what exactly telecommunications and franchises in our cities are. I mean, because we've just got too much going on, and it's going to continue. And I'd just like to be as well-informed, and I'm just not familiar enough with that.
We'll get you some additional information before the next meeting. And I'll ask them to attend so they can answer any questions council has.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So our next item is a resolution declaring certain property as surplus. Debbie Stutz.
Hey, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Tolbert and City Council members. I hope you're enjoying the spring that has finally arrived. I know I sure am. I present to you this evening a resolution requesting approval to surplus the two community development vehicles, B-75 and B-76, as noted on Exhibit 8. These vehicles are being replaced by the new community and economic development vehicle that that was recently approved by council by budget amendment. The vehicles have surpassed their useful life and Community Development Director Mark Hayes has determined it would be most advantageous to the city to surplus these vehicles and sell them at auction in an effort to recoup some revenue for these before they depreciate in value any further. So I thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and I hope you continue to enjoy our spring weather.
It's supposed to get nicer as this week goes on.
I am so ready.
We all are. Did anybody have any questions for Debbie before she leaves us this evening on this? All right. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you all. Good evening.
Next up is a professional service agreement for design and construction with Dow Engineering. Lorraine. Marty, okay, that might, my, she said Marty, but Lorraine popped up first.
That's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna have Monroe present this and, and give him a little experience in this department. So he's gonna go ahead. Monroe, you ready to go there?
Yeah, I'm ready. Thanks a lot, Marty.
Very good.
Good evening, men, mayor, council members. Mine is Monroe Whitman. I'm one of the airport operations specialists. Just like to let you guys know this cap concerns the design professional services agreement with Dow Engineering for the runway 1634 Millen overlay project in the amount not to exceed $289,511. Please be aware that Dow is currently the airport's on-call engineer. So this project does involve the design of a two-inch millen overlay of the airport's primary runway and taxiway connectors. And just to let you guys know, the last time the runway had an overlay was in 1994. And according to WashDOT Pavement Maintenance Program, an overlay is needed. This rehab project will maintain the structural integrity of the surfaces to support in current future operation safely. And I'd like to let you know that the FAA has stated they will fund 100% of the design services for this project utilizing 90% of discretionary and non-primary entitlement funds. The remaining 10% will be from the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplement Appropriation Act funds. The construction of the runway 1634 overlay, Millen overlay project is expected to begin in 2022. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, my team and I will answer them to the best of our ability.
It's surprising that this hasn't been done since 1994. It shows what good condition you guys keep those operating surfaces in.
Yeah, 20 years is the typical lifespan for any runway asphalt. And we've definitely exceeded that, but it, it's still in good shape, but it, it's, it's, it's ready to go. And now's the time to do it here, this, this next year in our plan.
Do we have any questions for Marty Monroe on this? Lorraine, we want to welcome you all back to work. Hope parenthood is going well.
Thank you, yes. Fun.
All right. Thank you, Marty, Lorraine and Monroe. Next up is the ordinance adding the community engagement director to the Title II of the Arlington Municipal Code. James Tree Frye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I come before you tonight and I've got three things on the agenda that are all related. The first one is a proposed amendment to the Arlington Municipal Code entitled II to create the position of Community Engagement Director. This particular modification comes after some time without the communication position being filled last year during COVID and kind of seeing the position that Sarah Lopez has been occupying as the community and economic revitalization manager, kind of abalting into more of a strategic community engagement position. She was kind of vital in providing a lot of the small businesses with the direct information and, and kind of coordination of providing business plans and documentation for grants and singularly responsible in some ways, it, keeping some of these businesses, particularly in the downtown core open. We'd like to expand out her duties to include all of the city's businesses as we continue to develop and recover from COVID and as we have new development coming into town. And this would also consolidate the communications function under this position as a director level. And the idea is that she would supervise the related communications specialist position. Before, we had Sarah in the manager position and we had Kristen Banfield as the prior communications manager. We would actually kind of lower the communications position down to a communications specialist. So they would basically act underneath the, the director in doing the actual editing, emailing, recording of videos, taking of pictures and assisting with the events that Sarah kind of coordinates. This would also kind of align from a budget standpoint, a lot of different individual budget items underneath one director. Right now, Paul either approves some of these expenses or I approve some of these expenses. And it would consolidate that and give budget control to the director for oversight and strategic planning. Happy to answer any particular questions that you might have.
Mike and then Jan.
Yeah, just wondering, what, what's the pay differential between the old positions and this new position?
I've included as an exhibit when we get to the pay plan in item number seven, but I can tell you what the, the difference in the ranges is. So currently, Sarah's position of Community Revitalization Project Manager is in pay grade J. The range for that position is $80,000 to $103,815. It's proposed that her position, if adopted as part of the code amendment, when we get to the nonrepresented pay plan, we go to a range of 101 up to $230,000, roughly $777 at the top end. The former communication manager position was at Schedule I with a bottom range of $74,351 and a top end range of $96,125. That would go down to a starting rate of $63,744 per year with an upper range of $82,411 per year. And it would also change that position from a manager that was salaried overtime exempt to an hourly employee.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to say, you know, since I've been on council, I can tell you the one person in the city that I have seen from dawn to dusk at every single event that the city has had has been Sarah. She has done an absolute incredible job. I've even hit Paul up a couple of times trying to get raises for her because she does so much for the city. I mean, and I know that there's a lot of staff that it takes to put all that together. But having someone who organized it and has done so well and then with COVID and keeping everybody informed and up to date. I, my worry was that because she was salaried, that she was working so many days and weekends and stuff. So I am thrilled that you guys are fixing this and that there's going to be, my question had been until I saw James's email this afternoon was I didn't understand quite that there was going to be two positions, but I'm thrilled that there is because I was worried that we were just dumping more stuff on her. But we couldn't have a better person in the world in that position.
And, and those, and basically that other communications specialist position is one of the two positions that Paul talked about at the retreat that we'd be able to fill, that we let go vacant last year. One would be in maintenance and operations, and then the other would be this communications position.
Yeah, right. So we're in good shape. Thank you.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
I just wanted to add to Jan's comments that I've worked with Sarah for many, many years and watched her grow. And she is a very competent, energetic, get-the-job-done person. And I've worked with her with Arts Council, Park, Arts and Recreation Commission, city events, just you name it. If you need it done, Sarah's the one to get it done. Sometimes she's a little abrupt, but man, she gets the job done. And so I am pleased to see this. I think she deserves this. Absolutely.
I agree. And I think the business engagement work she's done since America's Best Communities, also much like that Economic Recovery Plan through last year, the pandemic, has been outstanding to our businesses. Deborah?
I'll also agree with that about Sarah, but I do have a question for James in a minute. But I've worked with Sarah since, since I owned my own business and was a member of DOBA. In fact, I think she might have been the first city person I met. And she's a person of excellence. She really has had a heart for the businesses in town and helping them from the moment I've met her, which was about 12, 13 years ago, probably. So I've seen her grow, I've seen what she's done. It's city benefit and the city businesses benefit because of what she's helped to facilitate here. So I think it'll, I think it fits well. And, and I know she'll continue working with her team, you know, working with Paul and James well. And so I'm, I'm glad about this. Now, James, you talked about how the one position that was the management position now is going to a specialist. And I'm, maybe it was in your email that came this afternoon that you said that that, you had worked that out with the union, that everything's fine with that?
No, that, that's, that's the seasonal GIS position and we'll get to that. It's part of the amendment to the nonrepresented pay plan. Both of these positions would be non, non-union, unrepresented positions. And the primary difference is when Kristen Banfield was here, we had her kind of at the communications manager position to do kind of strategic things and to do some, some other stuff. It didn't quite get there with some of the programming. We were kind of forced into doing a lot of that this last year. And it became apparent that a lot of the work that, that Sarah was doing was at a higher level that probably was commensurate with being a director. And with additional money coming in, you know, you can kind of see the manifestation of some of the work projects that she's done that I don't think some of the other staff always understand or appreciate. You know, the migration of the community garden, the success of the Innovation Center renovations and getting the grant funding for that, coordinating some stuff with the development of the splash pad. And then she'll kind of coordinate the vendor selection and work on the park strategic plan going forward. And she does all that along with all of the direct community engagement. And I've got the long list of groups that she regularly, you know, interacts with. And it really is kind of leveraging those events for purposes of economic development. It benefits the businesses, it benefits the city to get all those events. And, and we had a pivot last year to put a lot of those online that we couldn't do, you know, in person. And she did a really great job of that, along with supporting all those groups as well. And, you know, kind of directing somebody in the communications role, I think, would be more appropriate going forward as opposed to having that person at that higher level. We're not going to have the fire department, so we won't have to respond directly to some of those communication calls like Kristen would have in the, in the former position that she had. And we're also providing PIO training to members of the police department. So that person will probably, you know, primarily interface with media during emergencies. Sarah will be at the high level, kind of directing and coordinating those efforts. And then the person underneath her basically will carry out that work plan that she'll supervise. So she'll still have oversight of all those things, but strategic control of them and kind of overseeing that particular position. And that's why we ended up reducing it down to a lower level because it's not going to exercise as much independent discretion.
So question then, as you talked, so it sounds like me, to me, that this director position also will be interacting, working alongside other directors. Because you brought up like the park strategic plan, well, that's CED and Public Works. So that'll be part of the job. Well, I guess it is for all the directors in our city anyway, that they really interact and work alongside each other.
And Sarah does coordinate, yeah.
I put Sarah at the table with the rest of the directors, working as a team.
Particularly with her. And business retention and expansion work, it brings a business voice to the director table as well, too, of what's actually going on with our businesses.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much for the answers.
Yeah. No, thank you for the questions.
James has a list of successive, it sounds like we were talking about your next item, but
Yeah.
your next item, which is the appointment of the Community Engagement Director.
So assuming that council does adopt the amendment to the code to create the Community Engagement Director, it's proposed that Sarah Lopez be appointed to that position. Just to give you some background about Sarah, she's been with the city since 1989, where she initially started in parks maintenance. And that year, she helped construct Centennial Park. She led many other park improvement projects over the years, including the Legion Park and Howler Park renovations. She moved into recreation in 2003, shortly after the city initiated recreation programming. And then as the city reprioritized central duties through the years with the changing economic climate, Sarah's pivoted to many different functions in the administration office, including executive assistant, a stint as the communication manager. And during that time, she completed her bachelor's degree in business with a major in marketing from Columbia College. For the last several years, she's focused on revitalization product, projects, including America's Best Communities, COVID-19 communications and business recovery efforts, as well as continuing community outreach with the public and community groups. And she is the primary go-to person in the city for all of the different special events, whether we're sponsoring them directly or coordinating with different groups to put events on. The list of boards, councils, commissions, community groups, government entities and institutions that Sarah has regular and ongoing contact with is quite extensive. You know, as the mayor alluded to, the many, many small businesses, both before and after COVID from America's Best Cities through the last year, working with all those groups to get their paperwork in order to get grant money. Some of them didn't have basic accounting or business plans or even things in their own names. And, you know, she spent hours upon hours in the last year, you know, in the evenings, on the weekends, meeting with people, getting information out and, and helping people walk through the process to enable them to continue on with their businesses. She has regular, an ongoing contact with Arlington Boys and Girls Club, the Arlington Cannabis Coalition, Arlington Churches, Arlington Parks, excuse me, Arlington Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission, where she is the staff lead. She's a board member of the Arlington Arts Council, the Arlington Drug Awareness Coalitions. She interacts regularly with Arlington Garden Club, Arlington Rotary Kiwanis and Lions Clubs, the Arlington School District, particularly in the last year, working with Bill Nelson on the Stronger Together Events. She's the staff lead for the Arlington Youth Council. She interacts regularly with the Downtown Arlington Business Association, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, coordinating things with the Town of Darrington, Leadership Academy and Smart Growth, Leadership Snohomish County, where she is an alum, the City of Marysville, the Nature Conservancy, the Northwest Innovation Resource Center, the Pilcheck Audubon Society, SCORE Small Business Services, the Smoky Point Business Communities, Snow Out Libraries, and, and the list goes on and on and on. And, and she works very, very hard. Sarah is the, you know, one person that I interact with on a regular basis. I have no worries about giving her something to do and I know that she will get it done every single time. And it also provides, you know, a little bit more autonomy for her. She's worked with supervision, but she does work autonomously now on a lot of her projects. And it comes to Paul Rye for budgetary approval, and this would give her budget authority over a lot of those product, projects. And so a little bit more of a voice in budget development and kind of strategic, you know, grant and funding sources for some of these projects. And I think it's a, a good move to put her into that position myself, although I'm not the appointing authority, the mayor is. But I would also lend my, my support to that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this appointment?
Oh, we're thankful.
Listening to that list that James went through, I could think of five other organizations that weren't on that list.
I, I, I have two more pages, but for just brevity's sake, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I can, I'll talk about the other ones next, next, next meeting if you don't put me on consent agenda.
So any questions or comments on the appointment of Sarah as Community Engagement Director? Okay, so let's move to your final item, which is the modification of the salary schedule for nonrepresented employees for 2021, James.
So along with those two earlier items, it would require modification of the existing pay plan for 2021 to include those new classifications and to eliminate the old classifications. So you'll see I put in legislative format the changes to the pay plan that's attached with that item. So you can see the addition of the two new classifications and then the two that are struck from the community revitalization and the communications manager positions. We also have the addition of a GIS seasonal worker, and this is the one that Deborah was asking about earlier. It comes from Public Works and this position would be on. It comes from Public Works, and this position would be on this year, maybe next year, to assist Katie Heim with basic kind of data entry and field work for the GIS system. Basically, it's a job for somebody that has one year worth of GIS college education, and they would be paid the same rate as our other seasonal maintenance workers. We just don't have that classification adopted as part of the nonrepresented pay plan. So before I can hire them in and pay them a rate, I have to have that on the the pay plan documents. That's why you've seen that included here.
Just to clarify, James, this isn't a budget amendment because this amount was already included in the budgets. This is just a change to the salary schedule.
That is, that is correct. At this point, none of these things that we've discussed would involve any kind of budgetary change.
Any questions for James on this?
No.
He's presented it pretty thoroughly.
Sounds good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, James.
John, Rachel. Okay, we had one member of the public that wanted to speak to the council this evening, but he hasn't signed into the Zoom meeting. So we'll go on with the rest of our housekeeping, and if he does, we'll catch him before we're done. So do you have any administrative report this evening?
Nothing else this evening.
Okay. I just want to thank the council for engaging on a beautiful Saturday in our all-day retreat. I think it was a really good session, and we covered a lot of ground. So it was nice to be in the same room with everybody again to have discussion. So thank you for that. I heard good feedback from the council members I heard from on that. Do we have any comments from council members this evening? Deborah?
Um, I just thought I'd tell the other council members that today was the RFA Commission meeting. And so we're going to, we're planning a retreat of how the three of us that have now come on to fill those two-year terms can transition in and kind of hit the ground running in August. So it sounds like probably in June, we'll be having a retreat together with the other commissioners to really go over budget and and strategic plan. And so I'll just keep you guys informed as we continue to learn. We're going to do a tour also with Chief Turmack to see all their facilities and meet the other staff. So I'm looking forward to that. And just wanted to let you guys know.
Any other comments from council members this evening? We'll let you know that the Senate was, the Washington State Senate was meeting all weekend. And finally, on Sunday, they had till 5 o'clock Sunday to get all of the bills out of the committees and onto the floor. And the Manufacturing Tax Incentive Bill did make it out Sunday morning. So it has passed both houses and will go through the legislative reconciliation process. So that's good news. All right. Do you guys know what items you might want on the consent agenda for next week?
Item three.
Three and four, if I didn't know.
You know, the only thing about item four is, you know, it's like a quarter of a million dollars. And I, that's my only question about that.
I just figured since it was grant funded.
Yeah, well, that's true, too.
I'm okay if it's on the those two consents.
Yeah.
You want any of James's on there? You guys let me know. I'm willing to put anything on there that's okay with the council.
I think it's good to bring the forming of the director position and appointing Sarah to that, to the council meeting. The salary schedule being that it's not changing anything, really. I mean, it numbers. I'm okay with that one being put on.
So so far, we have three, four and seven. Anybody disagree with that?
Hey, last chance to add anything.
Would you want to add five on there just because her appointment is the special thing to?
No, because we're adding a position. So I think that needs to be.
Okay, either way, yeah.
And not, not to suggest to make more work for myself, but just because of the order of operations with the consent agenda, we probably couldn't have number seven by itself on the consent agenda because the position has to be created in the code prior to adoption as part of the pay plan. So.
So we just took number seven off of the consent agenda. So we'll just be moving items three and four to the consent agenda. Thank you, James. All right. John never showed up.
Finally had somebody sign up to speak, and they didn't show up.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. Question? Is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Night, everyone.
Night.